Okay. Bear with me. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. I'll read my letter here and then we can proceed forward with our retreat this morning. So thanks for being here. As Chair of the Hampton Falls School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as the result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are a providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Hampton Falls School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through through this platform. And the public has access to contemporary contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. 646-876-9923 and the webinar ID or password is 91981997715 or by clicking on the following website address, which can be found on the SAU's website. By providing the public notice of the missionary necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. C. Providing a mechanism for public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at revins@SAU21.org. D. Adjourned the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note, all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Please state your presence and share whether anyone is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under right to know. Rhonda, can you take the roll call vote?
I can. Greg Parrish.
Present with family in and out of the room.
Jason Ferius.
Present alone.
Jill Swayze.
Present. My husband's working in the same room.
John Bailey.
Present with family in and out of the room.
Greg, I have the roll call taken.
Thank you. So today, everybody, we have we're the retreat here is part of has includes some training and it was scheduled that we would be discussing some, I guess, logistics about the board itself, what our goals are, how we want to reshape ourselves and define ourselves because for the past several years, our primary focus has been on the building renovation. And since that has now passed us, you know, I think we need to kind of redefine ourselves, but with recent events, with members on the board, I think today's focus primarily is going to be on the training aspect. We're going to cover some right to know laws and just general training for the board. From the New Hampshire School Board Association or Board Association, we have Barrett, Christina and Will Phillips with us today. They'll do the presentation. Please ask any questions you want during this time. Barrett and Will are very versed in this. I've worked with Barrett and several other training programs and he's wonderful at it. So take the time and take advantage of the situation because in the end it'll help our board out. I don't know, Bill, you have anything to add to that? If not, Barrett and Will, the floor is yours.
Greg, do you think you could introduce us to them, please?
Yes, I can. That's a great idea.
I love meeting new people.
Yes, there you go. So with us today, Barrett and Will, you know Rhonda and Bill. That was Beth Rossi who just spoke that she's the principal at LAS. The board members are John Bailey, Jill Swayze and Jason Ferius. And I believe that's all in attendance, correct, Rhonda?
Yes, yeah.
And I don't, go ahead.
I don't know. If you guys want to see the people that's in here on the meeting, if you want to see Barrett or Will, when you're in Zoom, there is a little, you can, even though Barrett is doing a screen share, if you move your cursor and go to the bottom where it says participants, if you click on that, it will open up a little box somewhere on your, and you can slide that box to the right and you can drag it down and it'll show like four or five people in attendance at the meeting. And then you can kind of, you know, that way you can see Barrett as he's talking or Will if you choose to.
Thank you.
Before we do get open up to, do any board members have any questions or comments before we begin?
I do not. I'm offsite, Greg.
Okay, thanks, Jay. Jill and John, I haven't heard, so I'll assume.
I was shaking my head. Nope.
Okay. I can see Rhonda, Barrett and Will, so. Anyway, so Barrett and Will, the floor is yours. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you very much, Greg. And thank you to members of the Hampton Falls School Board. Appreciate the opportunity to provide this training. Ideally, it's done in person, but I guess this is, this is how we do things now. So for, I know, I understand there's a couple new people on the board. We're just elected this past March. Just if I could give you, take a minute to talk about NHSBA and who we are and what we do. We're a private nonprofit organization comprised of about 160 dues paying school board, school boards from across New Hampshire. You pay dues to our association and in turn, we're happy to provide a variety of services. With me is our staff attorney, Will Phillips. And some of the, the primary services we provide are training, obviously. We do a lot of workshops, a lot of webinars and provide a lot of individual training for school boards across the state. Will does all our policy work. You've probably seen your policy manual, that, that three or four inch binder with policy and regulations on everything you could possibly think of. We provide, you know, we do policy updates when there's a new law or a new court case or something along those lines that requires changes to school board policies. And we're also heavily involved in legislative advocacy as well to arguing and presenting on behalf of school boards at the New Hampshire Legislature. There's a full bevy of our services on our website, nhsba.org. If you haven't been there, I'd encourage you to do so. We have a lot of free resources available without any login or anything, training documents, things of that nature. Please keep an eye on emails that we send out. We try and send out at least one or two emails a week highlighting either our training opportunities, our webinars or important news impacting school boards on especially in the last five months or so. You know, with, with the challenges that our school boards have faced. So more than anything, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak and provide this training. Will and I, we're going to do basic roles and responsibilities training. And then we're going to touch on a couple right to know law, right to know law matters. The training is for those of you that were on when Greg was asking me, this can, this is as long as you need. We're here, our time is your time and we're happy to answer whatever questions that the board may have and, and stay on the line as long as needed. So with that, I know, I think Rhonda, you were able to pass out or email to everybody the couple of the training documents that, that we had sent you. They're long, I won't lie. The one is, the first one is the, says table of competence roles and responsibilities for school board members. We're not going to be going through that, but the PowerPoint that we have is sort of an abridged version of that with page number references throughout. And if you have a chance, this is sort of the, I mean, the packet, you know, the Bible for, for good boardsmanship in New Hampshire. So read through it. There's a couple other things, roles and responsibilities, success through good policy, effective habits of school board members and so on and so forth. And the other document is our right to know law handout. That again, that's a long, long PowerPoint, maybe 50 or so slides. We're not going to go through all of that today, obviously, in the right to know law. You could have, you could have two eight hour sessions on the right to know law and still not, you know, cover everything that you needed to do. So before we get into the meat and potatoes of the content, are there any questions or comments that anybody would like to share ahead of time?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. So if you have, if you have the handout in front of you about the roles and responsibilities, just maybe as a reference, and then we're going to talk about, like I said, we're going to go through the PowerPoint more than anything. Let's get into the sort of the basics right away then. Let's, the first concept that board members need to familiarize themselves with is the differences between governance and management and how governance plays into the board's role while management plays into the superintendent's roles and responsibilities. The second key concept that NHSBA tries to, tries to get through during our training is that the board has collective authority and not individual authority. And we'll detail that as we go through a couple, couple more of the slides. So governance, what is governance? Well, the role of the school board is not necessarily to run the schools, but rather to see that they are run well. And where does the school board fit within its statutory and regulatory responsibilities and scope of authority to ensure that the schools are being run well? The school board governs the district while the, while the superintendent manages it. And I think the easiest way to conceptualize that is, are we talking about day to day operations within the school building? Well, those are generally administrative functions versus the governance in terms of boards instead of policy setting, strategic planning, setting direction for the school board through various mechanisms and other roles and responsibilities. And having a clear understanding of these differences helps accomplish positive student outcomes. As I mentioned, the board sets the vision and goals for the district and fulfills them through admin, through oversight of the administration. And we'll talk a little bit later, what the oversight of the administration can look like. And as we mentioned, the superintendent has the responsibility to implement the visions and goals of the school board. Kenny, moving on to the next slide. The difference and interplay between the two dominions is demonstrated well in some of the rules of the New Hampshire Department of Education. If, if you're not familiar with the rules of the Department of Education, we're going to be going through some of the slides here and you're going to see the, the coding ED. There's ED 301, ED 302. Whenever you see ED in front of a set of numbers, that stands for Department of Education Regulation or rule adopted by the State Board of Education. Sorry, I'm having a hard time flipping through here. And there's the first one that we're going to go through. So the school, the state, the state of New Hampshire, the State Board of Education has adopted a variety of rules relative to the duties and responsibilities of school boards and also relative to the duties and responsibilities of superintendents. And just to compare some of these, ED 303 is the rules governing school boards, the roles and responsibilities of school boards. And just as an example, the first one states that the school board shall adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate the recruitment, employment and evaluation and dismissal of teachers and other employees. So a school board adopts, and then this is just one example, policies relative to the oversight of your employees, right? Control, recruit, or excuse me, recruitment, employment, evaluation, so on and so forth. School board adopts the policy. Now compare that with the next slide. ED 302 again is the, is the duties and responsibilities of the superintendent as dictated by the state. The superintendent shall nominate all certified staff and appoint other employees in accordance with the law and the rules of the school board and school board policies. So on one hand, it says that the school board shall adopt a policy relative to employment of staff. The corresponding rule for superintendents states that the superintendent, and then the next one I'll put there, superintendent shall direct and supervise the work of all employees of the district. But you see in ED 302.02A talks about consistent with school board policies. So the board adopts the policy relative to employment matters and the superintendent is responsible for, for implementing that in accordance with what the, with what the school board has put within its policy. And if you want a little bit more clarity on that, if you turn to pages two and seven of the larger handout, there's some more rules in there that speak to that.
Oh Barrett, can I interject?
Absolutely, Will.
I highlighted the, the adopt policies simply because when you go through that two and seven, that's a, you know, a consistent theme throughout. The board's provisions will say adopt policies regarding employment, adopt policies regarding a budget, though are fiscal matters. And then in the corresponding provisions, most of them for the superintendents will say that just like it says there in A where it has the rules of the State Board and school board policies, that the, the paragraph B that shows up on that same slide, that one actually doesn't even include the adopt policies. It is stronger in the sense that the superintendent is the one that's directing and has the powers necessary to direct the employees. But anyway, so I just wanted to highlight the adopt policies because that's something that you'll see throughout when you're looking at superintendent duties.
And, and thank you, Will. And when we get, yep, go ahead.
Excuse me, it's Greg. Real quick, how do you and Will want to manage questions from the board today? Ask them as you go along or wait till the end? What's best for you?
Yeah, thanks, Greg. That's a good question. To the extent possible, let's hold off on them till we get through some more of the material because oftentimes Will and I find that the question that you may have might be answered on the next slide or a couple of slides later. So, and again, depending on how much time the board wants to, to spend on this. I mean, if it's vital and you want to get it out now, that's fine as well too. But let's try and get through a few and then if there's questions, hopefully we can, we can get to them once we get through a little bit more of the material. Does that work for everybody?
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Will. Anything else, Will, that you wanted to add or you good?
No, no, that, I just wanted to, you know, the adopt policies part.
Right. And, and, and we put this slide up here as then we're going to talk about policies in a couple more slides too. But this is one example of the governance aspect. Governance comes down to board policy essentially. And that's how you govern the district. That's the tool that school boards have at their disposal to set direction for the district, to set direction for employees, to set direction for students, to set direction for parents and all the other stakeholders that we may have within, within the school community. Collective authority, the second aspect, remember we first talked about governance versus management and then collective authority, two major sort of top, major premises, if you will, major headings. A school board can only act as a collective body acting upon the will or majority of its members. The only inherent authority an individual board member has is to deliberate and vote on matters at duly called meetings. Or alternatively, a board member can, excuse me, the board can delegate some of its authority to an individual board member. For example, you may have, you may delegate a person to be the spokesperson for the board. Often that's the chair, it doesn't always have to be, or you may delegate somebody to enter contract negotiations with the superintendent. But you have to remember that the board can only act and take action on behalf of the district at a duly called meeting with the four or five of you discussing, deliberating and ultimately voting and taking action. No individual board member has any authority to act on behalf of the board unless the board has given that individual such authority. Think that's pretty clear. Moving now, setting the stage of, of those two premises of governance and management and then collective authority versus individual authority. Getting into the real meat and potatoes of the key roles and responsibilities of school boards. There's a few sort of major topics underneath that that we're going to talk about as well too. The first is to provide a public education. RSA 189:1, and again, not to be too simplistic, you're probably familiar, RSA means the New Hampshire statutes. You're familiar with RSA 91A, the right to know law. RSA 189 is the statute that provides most information about sort of responsibilities of school boards, if you will. And the first, second statute in there, RSA 1891 states that it's the primary responsibility of school boards to provide at district expense, elementary and secondary education to all pupils who reside in the district until such time has acquired a high school, until the, until such time as the pupil has acquired a high school diploma or has reached age 21. I, I, we start, I started highlighting this in our, our trainings a few years ago. Just to, to keep that in the back of the school board's minds that at the end of the day, the school board is setting the budget, well, the voters set the budget, you set the proposed budget. But you have to do that within the context of what you need to do in order to provide an education for the students, for all the students within your district. But talking about the more sort of substantive responsibilities of school districts, NHSBA advocates strongly that setting up, setting and establishing school board policy is really the work that school boards should be focusing on for a variety of reasons. One, that's what's the statutes and Department of Education will say. And we've got some more examples in some other slides and within the larger handout. But also, you know, the reason that, that we, we advocate so strongly the policy setting is primary responsibilities and because these policies create the framework within which the superintendent can then manage the district and the staff can discharge their assigned duties. You've probably seen your policy manual, you've got various sections, right? Section A is sort of philosophical beliefs. Section B speaks to board operations primarily. Section C speaks to the superintendence. You've got a section on facilities, you've got a section on curriculum and instruction, you've got a policy or a section on staff, section on student responsibilities and expectations. But that's what you're doing through policy. You're, you're advising the staff and the school community of what their legal requirements are. And more importantly, what you want to see done at Hampton Falls. I mean, your policy statements are a reflection of your bodies, your board's collective beliefs as to how you would like to see the school district operate. And while many policies or policy subject are specifically, many policies are specifically mandated by state or federal law or regulations. You know, I, when I first started with NHSBA about 15 years ago, there were about 50, 55 policies that were required by law. And now we're up to, tell me, Will, north of 75, I think?
Yeah, a little, a little bit higher than that. There's a few, few more provisions in here on this. So if you go through this, you'll hit some more of those points.
Right. And if you have the large handout in front of you or accessible, if you look at page, page two at the top of page three, there's some more examples of most of the Department of Education rules that we talked about. The school board shall adopt a policy relative to the employment. We talked about that. The school board shall adopt policy relative to the purchase of equipment, supplies or services, your financial policies, adopt a rule to ensure that there's no unlawful discrimination in schools. Well, rules of school board policy. And, and then those are just the regulations, looking at statutes, bullying policy, concussion policy, use of restraints in schools, truancy policy, criminal background check policies, school lunch payments, health and sex education, non-academic surveys, manifest educational hardship, so on and so forth. And again, harkening back to the Department of Education rules, ED 306.04. ED 306 is what's referred to as the minimum standards. You may have heard that phrase. Basically, everything that a school district needs to do in order to be approved by the Department of Education to, to operate and to run and to offer an education. Within this 306, the minimum standards, there's a lot, there's a list of 26 different policies that school boards have to, have to adopt. So, you know, we use that just as an example that, you know, while NHSBA advocates it to best practice for boards to focus on policy, there's also, you know, sort of a legal framework that is, that establishes why NHSBA advocates so strongly that the policy work is what boards should be focusing on. And as Will mentioned, there are 11. Let's see. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, this is just another example of federal, in this case, federal statutes or regulations which also specifically require policies. And, and when you see the required policy, some of them require very specific content while others simply require that you have a policy. So, you know, I always like to point to the homework one. It's easy because there's one rule that says you have to have a homework policy. And then there's another Department of Education rule that says your homework policy has to relate to the grading system. So you have just, the, the federal policies tend to be very content specific. They tend to be very, you know, much longer. But this was just an example of where, another place where you find policy requirements.
Thank you, Will. And again, there are over 70 policies in the NHSBA policy database that are categorized as priority or required by law. So, before we move on to the next, the next topic of, or heading under roles and responsibilities, Greg, happy to open it up for questions now, questions about the board's policy role or anything within that, within that vein?
Can, can I add one thing before, just to explain? So policy, this has come up probably more frequently in the context of reopening plans. Policy doesn't necessarily mean, you know, the ABCD that gets stuck in the binder. Policy is also, you know, if a board passes a resolution, that's a, that's an expression of policy. A budget is an expression of policy. An approval of a plan is, is the board's approval of a policy. So, so there's policy with a big P and then policy with a little p. It's, you know, frankly, whenever the majority of the board is weighing in and taking a position, they're, they're establishing a direction for the district. And so, so that also, I think falls in this discussion of setting policy.
Good point.
Will, you actually touched on something that I have a question regarding is policies specific to our school that may not be specific to the rest of the district. You know, how's that applied? And then for those types of policies, what's the shelf life?
Give me an example, Greg.
I wish I could. I just can't come up with one off the top of my head. But maybe let's use the endemic here, maybe we.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to, the reopening plan, you know, you may have noticed from NHSBA that we have not published COVID-specific policies. And, and you know, one, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is by the time we get a policy out, the emergency orders change what we would have written a week ago. But also the, the unique circumstances of every single district and perhaps even every building within a district make it, you know, virtually impossible to, to even give a sample of what it would look like. You know, I've, I've done a couple of stabs at, you know, a mask policy or something like that. But so, so what we've instead been suggesting to boards relative to COVID is that, you know, either the board or in most instances throughout the state, it's coming from the administration largely because superintendents and administrators have been spending a good deal of their week just, you know, having conversations with the superintendent, I mean, with the commissioner, paying attention to the, the guidance from New Hampshire School Board, School Administrators Association and from School Boards Association. So they're accumulating all the developing details and then trying to align that with the needs of their school. So whether it's the board or the superintendent, they're creating, you know, some, some, some plans for how your district is going to maneuver or how it has been maneuvering in the past few months. Whether you call those a temporary policy or a plan, you know, we would, we would suggest that, that either you put a sunset provision on there. You know, so you indicate that, that unless the board, you know, renews this policy in January of 2021, the board, that, you know, this, this policy or this plan will, will terminate. But probably a better suggestion would be to have just an automatic, you know, have a, a scheduled renew, review date. You know, the, unless. You know, the uh um un- unless the board has taken uh action in the interim, the board will review this policy in January twenty twenty-one. Something like that, but it does, it does not need to be given a specific code and put in the big binder. And I I think one district really wanted to do that, so I suggested that they should give it a code of, I think it was EBCV. And and E- EB is where some of the emergency policies are reside in our um manual. And so I just gave it CV and then you go on after CV, um you know, whether it's CVA for masks and CVB for temperature taking and et cetera.
Okay.
Does that answer?
It it does, and and my next question has to do with, I guess, either the, you can call it the student or parent handbook. Uh how does that correlate with the policy? The policies of the district and in that particular handbook, can you reference the policy as call it the rule for the school then, for any given subject?
So, it it there's, um I just want to first say that I don't, that there's been a couple of moments where my my audio and video just freezes for a second or two, I don't know if it's on my end or or your end.
If it's on your end, Will, you sound, you sound good over here, so.
Okay, the um, so the handbook um has three different levels a- and you could even say more than that, but but the three different levels, there are of the required policies, some of the policies are required by law to um be reprinted in handbooks. And um e- e- either the entire policy or certain provisions. So for instance, the uh new Title IX regulations require certain things to be included in the handbook. So you've got sort of that legal policy requirement that is district-wide and and maybe even, you know, nationwide in some places where that has to be in in a handbook. Then you also have um it's sort of district um specific mandates about what they you know, what the board wants in its policy. So does the board want to have a um uh well, the the attendance policy, so you want your attendance policy, which in general is is formed, you know, in the the larger framework, at the very least, is formed first by the state, but then the specifics are formed by the board, but then how that's implemented in the building level is, you know, say for um uh K through three might be different than uh four through eight or whatever, you know, your breakups are. So you're you're, you've got sort of district attendance policy that that's imposed on 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 the um all grade levels, but then you've got building-specific components of that same attendance policy. So how is it that people report to principal in the building? And so, the from the, once the board has expressed its policy, what it's doing is it's telling the superintendent and and the rest of the school community, here's what we expect from you. The superintendent is then responsible for turning that into a building-specific protocol and procedure. And and generally, the superintendent is going to be relying on the principal to be be doing that. But it's the superintendent who's got that responsibility in the first instance. So your handbook um is is guided first by law, then by board policy, then by um, you know, Bill trying to figure out how to bring in all the loose strings and then by the principal in how to, you know, communicate and direct that, you know, it share that information with the um with the families and students and staff. Some districts have uh, i- i- you know, some districts have some form of how do, does the board review the handbook before it's published? Or does it, you know, the, you know, many districts, the 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 handbooks are done by the principals, they go up to the superintendent, there's a little back and forth. And then at some point or another, they're they're put in front of the board, whether it's pre-approval or after the fact approval um differs. But that's that's the general, general gist of uh handbooks there. So there are very specific rules and protocols and procedures that are intended to um carry out the board's uh policy uh expression.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Jill?
Uh, yeah, is there um a sort of built-in timeline for review of policy? Or does it only come up if something prompts that review?
Sure, um often, two answers. Oftentimes, what prompts review is when something comes up, and unfortunately, that's often too late, right? But we generally recommend that um you try and get on a three-to-five-year um rolling review of your policies. Um and when I say review, that does not necessarily mean that the full board needs to sit down and review every single policy every three to five years. If you have a policy committee, um you know, that's one method. Sometimes that will fall on either a superintendent or maybe an assistant superintendent to review the policies. So when we say should be reviewed every three to five years, somebody should have a set of eyes on them, just to make sure that it still looks like it makes sense. Double-check and make sure that it's still up to date with the NHSBA sample policies um and make to sure that it's still speaks to what the operations are within within your school district. So, again, it doesn't have to be a hard and fast review where you're having a lawyer look at it, but somebody should be putting eyes on on every policy every three to five years. And so if you've got, say, three hundred policies in a handbook, that's, you know, a hundred sixty to a hundred policies a year, somebody's at least reading through and taking a look at. And Bill, were you gonna say something on that?
Yeah, so Jill, um about a year and a half ago, really with with Will and Barrett's help, we set up among the boards a joint policy committee uh because there are many of these that are required by law and and our policy manuals were pretty seriously out of date. The initial charge to that group was to recommend back to the individual boards those policies that were required by law. We we've gotten a little bit beyond that now to some that are recommended, but there's a con- constant review against the um the policies that NHSBA puts out. And we're we're also in the process of setting up that three-to-five-year review cycle. Doesn't mean there aren't going to be, to Greg's earlier question, doesn't mean there aren't going to be differences in some policies between our districts, but particularly those that are required by law, the thought was they're going to be similar, if not identical. And so it was easier to take up that task with a with a joint committee of all the boards, and that's what we've done. And we've, we've gotten through most of them in in that in that year-plus period. So we're we're on track to have much more up-to-date uh and regularly-reviewed policy manuals.
Great, thank you both, um because I can imagine that things get updated quickly and particularly at the state of um the changing world and technology. You know, we need to keep up wherever we can.
Without a doubt, yeah, the um, you know, I I referenced earlier how when I first started NHSBA, there were maybe fifty policies required by by law, and now we're north of eighty. That seems to be, I mean, every year, there seems to be another three-to-five policies that the legislature says passes a law, the school board shall adopt a policy relative to X. Or alternatively, they'll change a law over here, and it may change three or four, there may be a ripple effect where it impacts two or three policies over on on this side. So um it's it's constantly changing, um there needs to be some fluidity to it, but a regular review process certainly helps. Any other questions from the group? All right, we'll move on to the next topic then, Will, I think, I think uh this is you.
Okay, so um I think we need to switch, who is the presenter?
Alrighty.
And so this might take us a second as um Rhonda.
Hang on, let me see what I can do here.
Rhonda needs to give us instructions. Either that or or Barrett's gonna drive my car.
Are you guys gonna use a different PowerPoint or the same one?
Same one.
You might, I mean, it might be easier, just Barrett, if you kind of know where Will's talking, just to continue like moving the slides forward.
Sure thing. I'll just put each slide up in its totality all at once then.
Because otherwise, you have to go out of this.
Ah, yeah, yeah, we're not doing that.
Okay.
We're not doing that.
Okay, I thought you could just switch, switch whose screen is being shared. So let's see, uh uh we we walked through policy and you heard me mention at one point that um policy is really a, I mean, budget is really a um an expression of policy. You know, it's just the decision-making you make in your own house. You know, you sit there at the begin- at one point saying, boy, it'd be great if we went to Hawaii next year, and then you realize you have to replace your roof. So your your ideal policy is you get to do both, but uh reality of the situation is you only get to do one and and usually it's the uh the the necessity that that wins. Before I go a little any further, does um Hampton Falls have a municipal budget committee? Or is the board responsible for the budget?
Uh, we do not, excuse me, well, uh, we do not have a Budcom.
Okay, it 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 does change a little bit when when you do have a Budcom. So um so ultimately, of course, the uh voters approve your budget, but uh New Hampshire laws and regulations require that the school board uh prepare a budget annually. That's true, even with a uh Budcom uh municipality. Once the, you know, that, we don't, we're not going to get into the mechanics of how you establish a budget. We'll be happy to answer some questions, but um you you also have budget oversight or fiscal oversight. And and sometimes it's not easy to see how that, you know, really how that works, but there's there's a few places um where it's it's clear, and then then and then there's an operational stage. So first, once the budget is passed, how do you provide the oversight? Well, the two biggest ones um places are through uh manifest review and then line item transfers. So before the uh um the treasurer signing off on checks, uh the treasurer can only do so if the board has approved um the that, you know, has authorized that expenditure. And and that happens through the manifest review process. That I I'm I'm astounded sometimes at the um breadth of how boards approach it. But um generally, the board, you know, the board looks at the manifest, um whether that means it's a three-inch pile of um redacted invoices, or it's a summary sheet, or it's simply a, here's how much it was this month or this week. You know, that's that's the the step that it's one of the steps where you have have some oversight. And then the second one is through line item transfers. And and between last year and this year, um I I would expect you're going to see an enormous amount of uh line item transfers compared to normal years. You know, your transportation line is going to look very different than you you plotted it out last December. And it, you know, when your budget was passed, you had a big number stuck in one box, and that number is going to get shifted to a different box. That's the the line item transfer. Uh and um you have a board policy that talks about um, you know, how that's supposed to occur. And and different, you know, different districts have uh, you know, different thresholds. But generally, there's a, you know, an amount that the uh board has said to the superintendent, if the amount is less than this amount, you can just transfer from this line to this line and just tell us later. But if it's over this amount, then you have to come get permission first. And um, you know, I've 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 seen the number as high as fifty thousand uh and, you know, maybe the for small, small districts, it tends to be five to ten thousand. But in any event, that that's another place where you can see that the money that that when you set your budget, you you um had certain um and, you know, you anticipated certain amounts being spent on certain things. And as the course of the year goes on, if you're getting too many line item transfer requests, it means that, you know, some things, you know, might be awry. Well, we know that there's a lot awry this year, but but um in general, that's that's a a place where the board has direct responsibility, not just authority, but responsibility uh to to make sure that the money's going where the board expects the money to go. And then um, you know, the third one, where you you have some oversight ability, it's not expressed directly in a um uh Department of Ed rule or statute, is just asking for reports. You know, once you're doing the manifest review, I mean, the line item transfer, if you do see something you know, that makes you scratch your head, you can ask for a detailed report as to why, you know, why this is happening, why, why do we have to shift? You know, double our maintenance line. So just having a a report is really communicating with your administration. So what you're doing um, you you know, in that oversight is is um just asking the people who are actually spending the money to to um uh explain the whys and the wherefore. And again, I, you know, I I've mentioned it already a couple of times. Oh, so Barrett, can you move the?
Yeah, does any questions on on budget-related stuff though, before we move on to the next slide?
These go pretty quickly now.
I'm good.
Okay. John, are you talking? Your your mic is off.
Sorry, thanks. Um, just a real quick question on line and transfers. Because we're a bottom-line budget district, I believe, um we don't actually do line and transfers, line specifically, I don't believe. Is that correct, though?
I I don't, I don't actually know that, Matt would know that better than I would. Because Matt's the one that brings those transfers to you, Greg, I I I don't, I don't know, do you, do you, do you know that?
John, I don't know if it's specific line item transfers, um I think it's more category transfers, if you will.
Yes, yes, pur- purpose transfers. So it's not, it's not the um, you know, the pencil line, it's the uh supplies line.
Right, that makes sense. Yeah, they're broader categories generally.
Okay.
And and it is, and and when you do your transfers, um you can never tra- you know, you you you're still stuck to the bottom bottom number. So you're just moving, you know, from transportation over to um supplies, over to personnel or something into that effect. But there are uh purpose categories that are identified by the Department of um Revenue Administration, and it's within those categories that the line item um transfers are are governed. But it, but again, I, you know, I've I've seen districts that have a very, very loose uh transfer policies and then some some more specific ones. Any other questions on on budget or fiscal oversight? Okay, so Barrett, two of you, and you can put up the whole thing, sure.
Yeah.
And you you know, this is, this is where, um if you remember, one of the first slides, Barrett said that you know, the function of the school board is not to run the schools, but to see that they are run well. You know, one thing that we say frequently and and it plays out in uh most of the the rules is that the school board has one employee, and that employee is the superintendent. And then the superintendent has all these subordinates. You know, that might be an oversimplification, but it but it is the, you know, the 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 way that the district is uh managed on a day-to-day basis. So, your, the the board's ability to see that the um uh district is run well hinges in large part on making sure you have a good superintendent and then making sure that you have this ongoing um review and discussion with the superintendent as to, you know, what you're expecting the district to do, what you're expecting the superintendent to do, and then revisiting, you know, how that's, how that's, how that's working out for you. And that basically is hire and evaluate the superintendent. There are, um first of all, you're required to have a superintendent. You don't have to actually employ the superintendent, but um that that's an odd thing in the law. But in any event, the board is charged with hiring the superintendent. In a multi-district SAU, it's it's, you know, obviously, you just have a a voice in the in the decision-making, it's the um joint board that's that's doing the hiring. There is no prescribed process for how you hire the um superintendent. And each, you know, each uh dis- uh SAU handles that a little differently. I know that that um NHSBA pushes and suggests that that to the extent feasible, you have a succession plan um when possible, it's not always. It's not always possible, but it is something to be, you know, to, to think about, how will you do this? You know, God, God forbid that, you know, Bill wakes up tomorrow and decides that he wants to be fishing instead. And just says, you know, I'm not coming to work anymore. But that, you know, it, it's usually a, a health issue that occurs. But, you know, there was one district not too far from you, um, last year where, where, you know, there was five, was it five weeks? Six weeks, uh, they had to find a, a new superintendent. So, you know, having an idea in your head, what it's going to look like and whether you, you know, adopt a policy to just create a framework or, or not is, is, you know, up, up to, uh, the board.
Have you been speaking with my wife, Will?
You, you, your, your wife and Giselle Brady, apparently. But the, uh, uh, so the other, the more important one, because hopefully, you know, you're not, you know, none of you are ever going to have to hire a superintendent because Bill's going to be there for the next 20 years. But the next place and the more, the more important place is the evaluation component. And evaluate doesn't mean just give them a report card at the end of the year. It means, you know, creating the, uh, you know, the syllabus at the beginning of the year, what you expect. And, and, and if possible, creating benchmarks so that you can review as, as time goes on. Some districts have, um, you know, uh, a, a, a very prescribed, um, process where there's a, a, a meeting in, say, um, you know, June or so before the, you know, in the planning for the next year. Here's what we hope the district, uh, accomplishes over the next year. Here's where your part in that is. And then you review that again, say in October or November. You know, November, of course, you're really ramping up for your budget. And then you probably, uh, you know, take a breather until right after your, are you SB two or, or, uh, traditional?
We're SB two.
Yeah, so as soon as you're deliberative, I mean, you're, you know, your first session is over. You, you know, that might be, you know, you have a couple of weeks to breathe a little bit usually. So that's a nice place to, uh, stick another, uh, review session. But in any event, it's an ongoing, uh, process. Now, in a multi-district SAU, just like the hiring, um, you know, your say in the evaluation is not, um, you know, is not the final word. But you as a board do have the ability, the authority, and maybe the responsibility to try to, you know, work with Bill to see what Hampton Falls expects. And it might be a little bit different than what the SAU expects. So, so, um, you know, but, but more than anything, we, we highly recommend that that's a dialogue between the board and the superintendent, both with respect to process and expectations.
I'm going to add on to that a little bit too, Will. What the slide doesn't say, um, and maybe a good point to, to revise some of the slides. The first aspect of evaluation though is not evaluation. The first aspect of a good evaluation is goal setting at the beginning of the school year. You know, we generally advocate that, um, you know, the superintendent and the school board sit down and jointly establish some goals, both for the superintendent and for the school board for that school year. Why do we need to establish goals from the onset? Because that's what your evaluation is going to be based on, right? You know, you need, you, you, the superintendent needs direction and clarity from the board as to what those expectations are. Or else when you get to the evaluation stage, you, you may have a different expectation of what the goals were or what the super, you may have a different expectation of what you wanted from the superintendent versus the superintendent's expectation of what the board wanted from him or her. So if you set those goals from the onset, um, that's what you're measuring the evaluation based on. And we also advocate that rather as Will said, don't give them a report card at the end of the school year. Benchmark, check in, do two or three mini evaluations throughout the year, the same way we do with our teachers. If you set the goals at a retreat in, say, a July or August timeframe, you check in again in October and November. You check in again, um, in, in January, you check in again after annual meeting. So one, there's no expectations and surprises at the end of the year that, you know, everybody was on a different page relative to expectations and goal performance and things of that nature. And two, more than anything, I, I can't tell you the number of times that I've gotten a call from a school board in, say, you know, April or May, when they say, you know, we, we, we have to do our superintendent evaluation. And by terms of his contract, he, we have to have it done by, you know, May 15th. And it's like May 7th. Well, you know, so if you're doing a sort of mini evaluation, mini check-ins across the, across the course of the year, you're not, you're not getting to that sort of deadline and you're not, not missing contractual obligations and contractual responsibilities. Questions on that? Thoughts on that? Nope, seeing none. All right, Will, I'm gonna jump on to the next, um, next set of slides.
So question that, that I have, um, what, what grades are, uh, is Hampton Falls?
Well, we are a K through eight school.
Okay. And, and you know, that, that affects in, in, in many instances, what types of, um, hearings you might have. But in any event, um, in, in almost all aspects of board, um, actions, you're acting in what's called the legislative capacity. You're creating policy, you're creating local school district law. Budget, again, the same thing, it's a, you know, fiscal expression of policy. You know, when you're, um, approving, uh, teacher nominations, whether you're, um, creating the, the budget, making resolutions, uh, all of those things are, are legislative functions. But, uh, there are various, uh, statutes and Department of Education rules, um, which, uh, they have the board acting in a different capacity. You're acting in a quasi judicial capacity, essentially acting as a judge and jury over, um, uh, disputes, uh, concerning individual, uh, teachers or students. There, there are some outlier policies in some districts where, you know, even members of the public might have a right to a, uh, a hearing, but that's really a local policy decision. But examples for students expulsion, long-term suspension, manifest hardship. You, you know, generally for eighth grade and below, hopefully we don't see too many of the, uh,
All right, did I need to go back there?
No, that's, that's okay. You know, hopefully we don't see too many of the expulsion and long-term suspensions for, uh, eighth grade and younger. But you may see, uh, manifest hardship, um, type, uh, hearings. There are, uh, there, there are some significant changes to, to the, uh, rule and statute this year. So once again, you'll see a new policy on that, uh, coming out in the fall. And then for employees, a little bit more common, uh, but still hopefully not very. Dismissal, non-renewal, labor grievances are all, uh, places where a school board, um, would have, uh, you know, might have the, um, let's say, opportunity, but it's really a responsibility to act as a judge jury. Okay, so you move on to the next slide.
All right.
Thank you, Will.
Yes.
Can you define manifest hardship for me, please?
I can, if you give me a second. I, there's a, finally a definition in the statute. Basically, um, which, which I wrote, so I'm trying to, uh, this law just passed, just became law. Governor signed a bill, whatever, a month or so ago. Basically, I'm trying to think of the language, where the educational setting of the student is detrimental to the child's wellbeing such that they cannot receive a proper education. The key to that aspect is that it needs to be detrimental, not just that another placement might be better for the child, but that the current educational setting is, is detrimental to the child's health, safety, wellbeing, educational opportunities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so the, uh, the statute, um, you know, it's a, it's a odd statute. There's two different types of reassignment. And so one reassignment is best interest of the children or child. And that's, that's something that happens more at the, uh, administrative level. But if the, uh, you know, if the administration and the, um, parents can't come to an agreement, the parents have a, a right to bring it forth to the school board. Uh, and the school board gets to, to review the evidence that the, uh, parent is introducing to show that the, the present school assignment is, um, you know, is a hardship. Uh, you know, interesting law, it, it, it originally, um, had the, it had two parts. One was, you know, way up north, you might have a kid who lives across the river. And it, and across the river is a different school districts. He's five minutes from a school in another district, but he's an hour and 15 minutes from the school in his own district. And so that, that, you know, that was a manifest hardship perhaps. And then the other place previous to special education laws, um, you know, you had larger school districts which were able to provide services, um, it, within the district. But, but the little tiny district didn't have a, you know, a speech language pathologist or somebody to help with that child. So in any event, um, that's where it derived from, but it's grown, uh, somewhat. But the, the, just the type of hearing that you have. But think about, um, you know, what we, what we, um, perceive as, uh, a fair haring, uh, hearing in, in the United States. We have this idea of, uh, due process. And two main components of due process that, that, and in fair haring that, um, many of us would just automatically assume are the, um, right to have an impartial judge and the ability to hear or challenge estimate, uh, evidence and testimony that's being, um, used against, um, that person. So think of, you know, an astute expulsion or a teacher dismissal, though, you know, there are substantial individual rights that are being impacted. And, and the law assumes that the, um, you know, that the board is going to provide a fair hearing, you know, to the person whose rights are being affected. And the, you know, this, this, um, the, the idea that you need to be an impartial judge and you need to make decisions based on cases and the evidence that is before you is a strong reason why there's a separation between, um, you know, the board function relative to employees and students and the administration's function. If, if, uh, you know, it, while you're serving as a board member, you are going to receive a phone call or an email from a disgruntled parent or perhaps a, um, you know, a teacher who, who, um, you know, is, is friends with you. So contacts you as a board member. And you're, you know, you have to keep in mind that at some point you may be deciding a case that, that involves the complaint that somebody is sharing with you in the first instance. Your job is not to investigate that complaint. It's not to dig into that complaint. Your job is to refer that, that complaint to the proper, uh, you know, the proper, uh, personnel to, to handle that, um, you know, that complaint, whether it's from the employee or from the, uh, parent or, or from the student. Or even if it's something that, you know, that, that you saw, you want to, uh, re-channel that to the, um, you know, the appropriate personnel. And, and we'll get to this a, a little later as well. But I think, um, because that tends to be a, you know, a, a, an issue that every board member will face at some level or another. We suggest that, um, you know, you should be familiar with your board policy for handling complaints. And in, in our, uh, policy manual, that the two basic ones are KE and KEB. KEB is the policy regarding complaints about individual, um, staff members and students. And by being familiar with that policy, what you're doing is preparing yourself for the, uh, you know, the unanticipated encounter in the produce aisle where somebody comes and starts to share with you, you know, what Johnny did to Mary in the third grade classroom and also how the teacher was failing to supervise. You, you're pointing them to the specific policy, not because you're, you're, you know, taking hands off, but you're giving them the path to solving their problem. And if in fact it doesn't get solved to their satisfaction, you're also preserving their ability to have a fair, you know, hearing process if it ever reaches, um, that, that point. When you interject yourself, uh, you know, more, uh, than just finding out enough information to pass it along to the superintendent, when you interject yourself, um, into that, even if you haven't created, you know, you crossed the legal threshold, you make it easier for whoever's challenging the action of the district, whether it's, you know, failing to, you know, fire a teacher or failing to expel a student or, or just the reverse, you know, you're expelling a student. And, um, you know, if you've interjected yourself into that inappropriately, you, you make it easier to have, um, sort of, uh, tangential arguments. You, you create, um, at least a window for expensive, expensive and sometimes winnable appeals. So anyway, that's, that's all we've got for, uh, various hearings. But if, um, anybody has any questions about, you know, how this relates to directing and supervising employees or how the hearings work, anything like that, now's a good time for, for bringing those up.
I'm good.
Okay. Barrett, slide one, there we go. Collective bargaining, how many, um, uh, bargaining units does Hampton Falls have?
Uh, we have two.
Two, okay, so, um, I'm not going to spend much time, uh, talking about impact bargaining, which is, uh, probably a word that you're hearing now that you never heard before, or maybe you never heard before. But generally collective bargaining is, um, you know, in, in New Hampshire and many other states, rather than using the, the, the phrase union, uh, a union is in fact a collective bargaining unit. It is the, uh, certified exclusive representative of the employees that fall within that unit. The board as the governing body is the party and signatory for your collective bargaining agreements. And therefore it has the, at least the, um, primary responsibility for, uh, negotiating the terms of, of, uh, collective bargaining agreement. Some districts, um, I, I only know of, uh, one for sure, but I, there's probably more. Don't even use board members on their negotiating teams, the, by far the vast majority of them do. Usually there's at least one, um, probably usually two, if it's a five-member board. You never want to have a majority of your board members on the negotiating team. But the general process is your negotiating team, uh, works out a, a tentative agreement with the, um, with the union. The board as a whole then ratifies the contract as does the, uh, membership of the collective bargaining unit. One thing that you, you, you know, kind of irks some people, the only people who get to vote, who are in the union on the contract are those who are union members. You can be a member of the collective bargaining unit without being a member of the unit. I don't know if that came out right, but if, if I'm a teacher, I don't have to, um, join the NEA. But if I don't join the NEA, I also don't get to vote on the contract. I'm impacted.
Still receive the benefits of the contract.
Yes, yeah, you receive the benefits of the contract, um, but, but, you know, you don't get to vote on it. So in any event, um, both the, uh, board and the union vote on the contract. And then if there are, uh, cost items in the contract, usually, you know, your raises, um, or changes in the insurance, premium distribution, not, not increases in insurance, but the, uh, say the, um, district's contribution level. Anything that has a, a cost effect that requires the appropriation of funds from, uh, the voters has to be voted on by the voters. If you have a collective bargaining agreement that, let's say, um, only changes the, uh, number of professional development days in a year, that wouldn't have a cost, uh, item impact. And therefore, you know, something like that might not have to, uh, go to the voters. But the vast majority of, of, um, collective bargaining agreements, um, because they can include cost items, have a, have a, a vote by the, uh, voters of the district. If the voters don't approve it, um, then all of the, the negotiated items fail. The, where the, you know, things that the board should think about when it is entering negotiations, um, are, you know, think about who is on your negotiating team. First, it takes a lot of time, so it has to be somebody who is going to commit to the level of time, um, required. And then the other thing is, um, you know, does, you, you want people who generally reflect the view Generally reflect the view of the board as a whole. If you have a diverse board, you might decide that you need diverse, uh, members on that on that board. But if you have, uh, you know, say four members who think a certain way. If you put the other person on that board, you could create a veto power of that person. And the reason is because unlike almost all other, um. Places, uh, for school board members, school board members don't lose their, uh, individual views. They're they always retain the ability to speak as an individual and to have their individual views. However, and not always, because in this instance, not necessarily. If you are on the bargaining team and you negotiate a tentative agreement. You then have the responsibility to support that tentative agreement. You do not have the ability to speak out against the tentative agreement in either the ratification stage before the board or in the, um, you know, the the. The debate among the public whether they're going to vote in favor of the contract. And and because of that, if you put a person who, you know, has a strong opposition to the general. Philosophy or ideas of the board. That person has to support the tentative agreement if he's on the negotiating team. If however, he's not on the team and a tentative agreement comes to the board that he disagrees with. Then then he can maintain that disagreement and vote against the contract. But the contract is going to get ratified by the board four to one. So just anyway, be be mindful of how you you set up your negotiating teams. You know, for some reason that's come up. You know, the last few years that I negotiated contracts for boards. You know, I hit that maybe three out of five years, whereas in the previous fifteen years I had never seen it once. So just it it's still fresh in my mind how much of a problem that was. Any any questions on collective bargaining? Oh, impact bargaining. Have you have, do you have any questions about impact bargaining? We don't usually spend too much time on it. But but when the board needs to make or decides to make, um, changes in in what are the terms and conditions of of employment. And you have a collective bargaining agreement and those changes are inconsistent with the collective bargaining agreement. You are required to, um, negotiate with the union about the impact of those changes. So you still, you still retain some ability to, um, you know. Make changes, um, to terms and conditions of employment, but you may be required to, uh, negotiate how that impacts the employees. And the reopening plans in some districts, um, do in fact, uh, impact the the. Primary terms and conditions of employment. So I don't know if if that's a a hot topic for you. And if it is, you know, now's a good time to to ask those questions.
So we we did that in the spring. So board members may remember the document that that we brought to the orgs. That governed some of the remote learning in the spring. And that's what I was referencing in that update this weekend that I spoke with board chairs about. And so I'm in those discussions right now with the union over the reopening. Plans, which which is in which is exactly what Will's talking about. It's impact bargaining.
Yeah, and and some of, you know, the a lot of, I should say that, uh, you know. A commendation to Bill here, I I think way back in April or might have been May. Bill sends us this document saying, hey, here's our the start of our reopening plan. And there are other, most districts didn't get to that until late June or July. So, you know, good, good for you that you were ahead of the curve. But, uh, a lot of the, uh, you know, many districts are getting, um, proposed. They're called, you know, memorandums of agreement or a memorandum of understanding. Sometimes referred to as sidebars or side agreements. From the unions that, uh, I I think right now the, uh, the template that many are receiving is about seven pages long. And and, you know, talks about how many, you know, how many times you have to wash the desk per day. And a lot of that is not terms and conditions of employment. Terms and conditions of employment are how much you get paid, how long is your workday, what are your benefits? But, you you know, that's not to say tell the union to pound sand. You really do need to work with the union because if they decide they're not safe and decide not to show up. You're going to straight up remote learning and you don't have much of a choice. And maybe you're doing that anyway, but but, um, you know, so that you need to have the dialogue with the union. The question is, you know, to what extent is it required impact bargaining? And to what extent is it simply, you know, good and, you know, acting as a responsible employer? And and making sure that you have the staff and personnel to deliver, um, instruction to your your students. Anything, anything?
Other questions on bargaining?
Good.
All right. In the interest of time, I'm going to try and get through the next couple of slides pretty quickly and wrap up the roles of the of the, um, of the school board. Normally, uh, I find that these go a lot quicker when we're in person. There it's a slower presentation when we're on Zoom. Normally, we do do spend some time on sort of the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent as well. So we can sort of compare and contrast the rules and the statutes and whatnot. Wanting to be respectful of your time, I'm going to go through these next couple of slides. Um, and finish up the the stuff about the roles and responsibilities of the school board. And then I understand there were some right to know law questions that you wanted us to cover as well too. So we'll jump into that, um, afterwards. Does that sound like a plan to everybody?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. And and there certainly if there's other questions about other topics that we haven't covered. We're on the phone, so by all means feel free. We can, we can get to those as well too. The next aspect relative to to primary sort of topics and headings under roles and responsibilities of school boards is to communicate with the public. It sounds simple, but, um, some boards struggle with this and it's a challenge for them. You know, and this does not mean, when I say communicate with the public, I I don't necessarily mean just posting your meetings and making minutes available. You know, on your website or whatnot. But, uh, we we did a webinar, um, I don't know, we've done two webinars the last month or so about communicating with your with your public, especially in times of of COVID and reentry plans and school safety and and all the various, um. Challenges school districts are going through, trying to keep parents informed and trying to keep the community informed. So NHSBA strongly advocates that districts develop a communication plan, um, including input from the public. You know, to establish and accomplish the board's priorities. And certainly, I think we can all appreciate at times like this. I mean, what what do people want right now? What do parents want right now? They want information and they want communication from their school boards. When are we opening? What's the reentry prep plan look like? Is my school going to be safe? What protocols are in place? Is it safe for them to ride the bus? Who's going to be providing the instruction if we've got some kids in the building and some kids remote? So communicating with the public, especially during the times of, I hate to call it a crisis, but in times when everybody's already amped up and stressed out enough as it is, um, is invaluable. And it it's easier today to communicate with people than it ever has been via social media and app programs and notification programs. So, um, I trust you're doing a good job with that, but just be mindful of trying to, trying to 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 keep the public and and parents especially informed of of any major decisions and changes and things that are going on, um, right now with respect to COVID. And then strategic planning, um, you know, NHSBA advocates strategic planning. Not only is it best practice, but there is, there is a a Department of Education rule that that relates to this. You know. ED three oh three point zero one G imposes a duty upon school boards to develop long-range plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. Um, that sounds like strategic planning. And, you know, one of the reasons that you want to be able to have an effective strategic plan in place is, um. It's it's basically forecasting, right? What's our budget going to look like in the next five years? What are our student enrollments going to look like in the next five years? What is the age of our staff right now? And, you know, do we anticipate staff leaving in the next five years? Or perhaps even more of a concern, do we anticipate our staff, um, you know, reaching the top of the pay scale in the next five years? Those have significant budget implications, don't they? You're going to have a lot more money tied up in staff. If your staff is seventy-five percent of your staff is, you know, fifty-five years and older versus if fifty percent of your staff is, you know, thirty-five years or younger. What are our facility needs? I know that that was an issue in Hampton Falls for a number of years. But, um, you know, capital improvement plan, this year we're going to do the windows, next year we're going to do the boiler, the year after that, we're going to do the roof. Your technology plans, all of those need to be, um, ideally in 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 a strategic planning. So you can properly plan and prepare for your budget, so you can properly plan and prepare if you need to start stashing money away in, um, in a reserve fund or a trust fund. So you can identify, um, spacing and facility needs within your facilities. And 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 a whole host of other, you know, educational related, um, aspects to the delivery of 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 educational services. We recommend that if you're going to do a strategic plan, you make it a community-wide event. You bring in parents, you bring in students. And because in order to get the buy-in, if you're presenting this long-range plan to the school districts and if you hired a facilitator and spent money on bringing it in and spent, you know, six months or a year developing a strategic plan. You need that community buy-in. So bring the parents in, bring the kids in. I know a number of years ago, um, S A U sixteen, um, Exeter and the surrounding towns. Probably more than ten years ago at this point, they developed a strategic plan, um, S A U wide. And they opened their doors. They said, if you want to be part of this process, we will find room for you. And so they had various subcommittees, facilities, technology, so on. And 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 they found space for everybody, um, which I thought was a pretty, pretty welcoming way to do it and a good way to get community buy-in. So strategic planning, um, uh, it it's just a vital aspect. I mean, it's good boardmanship to help you prepare for for unexpected events or what may be coming down the pike. Questions, um, some other slides, um, I'll let you read these on your own. They're both on the the PowerPoint and as well in the larger handout, some learning tips for new board members.
Actually, Barrett, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely, Greg.
Uh, on that previous slide, um, the strategic planning. For the rest of the board, this was supposed to be part of this meeting. Aside from the training itself, um, as we start to redefine who we are and what what our goals are. Obviously, today we won't be doing this, but this was kind of on the agenda long term to start taking a look at the long-term plans for the for the district. Educationally, the building and everything that Barrett mentioned. So we're probably going to, I'm going to suggest future meeting to start this process once we get our fifth board member. But, uh, just to lay some groundwork for you to start thinking about it. This was kind of the second part of this meeting today. So we will readdress this, but I just wanted to identify that for you.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. Um, and I I don't want to sound like a salesperson here, um, or giving a pitch, but we work with a facilitator who does strategic planning. There's a cost to that, obviously. So Bill, or Greg, if you want to reach out to me afterwards, I can get you his name. He's done probably eight or ten of these for us over the last seven or eight years. And what I like, he's a former school board member. So he he he's been, he hasn't been on a school board in ten or fifteen years, but he gets that perspective. So, um, if that's something you want assistance with, then we can talk about that later. Bill, I see you nodding, so we can, we can talk about that later. Any other questions, comments, thoughts right now before we sort of shift gears? Joe, are you just moving your hand? You're not waving at me, right? Okay, sure. Alrighty. Again, getting on with these slides, I'm going to skip these for now. I'll let you read these on your own. Couple of things that I will highlight though, just to, uh, we do have a whole section. About the superintendent's roles and responsibilities. Again, in the interest of time though, I want to, I want to skip over that, um, and jump to, I know, Greg, you had mentioned some right to know law type of things. So is there something you wanted, specific questions about that or specific areas or topics you want us to cover on that?
My biggest concern with right to know Barrett. Is how it ties in with social media. Yeah, I know, I get, I have a general understanding of the process with our meetings and how we're supposed to communicate and how we're supposed to make individuals, um, requests regarding information that's public, available to them if they request it. My concern then, how does this tie in with today's social media?
Yeah, great question, Greg. I know a lot of boards and board members struggle with that. Will, I'm gonna pass that over to you. And while you sort of find your spot, I will tell you, um. Again, in the long, the big right to know law handout document that we sent, there's a section on that, starting on page thirty-eight. But I'll let Will handle handle the conversation. And I don't think we have this PowerPoint. Read readily available, or else I'd put it up for you.
So just some, uh, you know, general, general thoughts on that. Is that social media doesn't really change the rules relative to the right to know law. You're still, you know, you're still bound by, um, you know, the same restraints. Uh, as you would, uh, for any other type of, um, uh, expression. And so first on the, uh, you know, a caution on the meeting aspect of it. And and I'm because we're not using, uh, the the handout itself. So a meeting basically has three, if you have three indicia. Then you have a meeting as defined under the right to know law. And so you look to make sure that you don't ever have those three indicia unless you've properly noticed your meeting. And the three indicia are a quorum of the public body. So a board is a public body, but so is a board committee, whether it's a subcommittee or an advisory committee. So an advisory committee might not even have board members on it. If the advisory committee is advising the board on a matter that the board has jurisdiction over. That is a board committee, which is different than if the superintendent forms a committee to help the superintendent, um, you know, carry out a superintendent responsibility. That's not a board committee and may and probably, um, wouldn't be a public body unless it was, say, a statutory committee like the wellness committee or, um, you know, the joint loss management committee, both of which are required by law. So you so you've got the public body, a quorum of the public body. If you got five members on your policy committee, only one of whom is a a board member. Still, three members of the policy committee would be a quorum of a public body because the policy committee, um, if it's if it's advising the, uh, the, uh, board directly as a a, um, board committee. So you've got a quorum. You've got the ability to communicate contemporaneously, which essentially is everything except for snail mail. If you're talking in person, if you're talking via text message, if you're talking via email, if you're talking. And here's the important one with social media, if you're making comments on a Facebook thread, for instance. If you've got five people on your board and three of you are entering comments on a Facebook thread. Then you've got the ability to communicate contemporaneously. You've got a quorum. And then the next one is about matters over which the, uh, board has has again jurisdiction. I think it's advisory supervisor, uh, re or or jurisdictional control. And if it's, so if it's got anything to do with schools whatsoever. Then it's going to be within the board's, uh, jurisdiction. If instead you're talking about committees, let's say it's the, uh, you know, the athletic committee. And you're talking about, um, you know, the English, you you're waiting for the meeting to start. You got three, um, you know, three, uh, members of the, uh, athletic fields committee or whatever. And you're sitting there talking about, um, you know, the history curriculum. That's not your jurisdiction. So you don't have a, a, um, you know, that third component. So you've got quorum, ability to communicate contemporaneously over a matter within that body's jurisdictional control. Those three things mean you have a meeting. And social media, if you're commenting on the local, you know, the Hampton Falls community page and people are talking about the reopening plan. And you've got three board members on that same page talking about the reopening plan, you're having a public meeting. Uh, under which you're supposed to, um, and and when you have that, you're supposed to have the, uh, you know, the, follow the technical requirements of the right to know law. You notice the meeting, keep minutes. Yeah, have it in a public place unless you're following the, uh, little script that, uh, Craig, uh, Greg read at the beginning. Have it in a public place unless you're following the little script that Craig Greg read at the beginning. So that that's, you know, the 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 biggest thing to be concerned about relative to social media. Is make sure that, you know, you're not wandering in. You know, to a, in a way, what would otherwise be a a public meeting. The second thing is, and this one. You know, they 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 kind of overlap is, well, to what extent are you allowed to? Speak on your own behalf, and you don't, again, you know, mentioned. I I think in the context of the collective bargaining, board members don't. Lose their ability to speak as an individual. Two, two points on that, one is, and this is not specific to social media. Board. Board effectiveness, so the, you know, board, the board as a whole, a board is more effective. When all of its board members support the the board decisions. It it's not a constitutional requirement. But, you know, once the board has taken an action, your board will be more effective. If even the dissenters at least support the fact that that was a majority decision, and that's the way, you know, that the the the. You know, the district is moving forward. So, you know, don't. We'd strongly encourage you not to go on to Facebook and and dish your fellow board members. Not only does it, you know. So not only does it does it undermine that particular decision, it also may undermine your effectiveness as a board member. Because you're creating personal divisions, so the next time you have a great idea. You know, don't be surprised if some of your board members, fellow board members, don't think it's such a great idea. Whereas otherwise, they may, Barrett, did you raise your hand there for a second?
I'm sorry, I had to talk to Abner real quick, sorry.
Tell Amanda I said hi, I don't. So let's see, that that was number, number one, number two, when you are speaking as an individual. So you do have the ability to, you know, you have the the right to retain your personal views and some board members. There, so think of two different social media climates here, you've got the the district's social media presence. And, you know, we strongly suggest that that's usually the administration that's handling that that part of it. And and part of the reason for that is, remember that you only act as a collective body. And it's very difficult to even answer a question. On behalf of the district, if you haven't cleared that as a board member with the rest of the board. You know, why did you do this? Well, I can answer why I did this, but I can't answer why the board did this unless the board was very clear about why I did that. So i- if you are engaging on social media, you should be doing so and making it clear. That you're doing that in your individual capacity, if you maintain a, you know, your own page. Because, you you know, your younger constituents expect that that's the way you're communicating. You want to label that page as as your individual page, it's not the school board's page in the materials. In the right-to-know handout we gave you, it's, and and again, I don't have that up. Barry, Barry, there is a, I think there's an index on the on the second or third page. And there is one on on social media suggestions, there's a disclaimer that you. Can pin to the top of your social media pages, and that's true for whether it's Twitter or Facebook. And Instagram, I think, is the other one, and you can pin that, and it basically says, you know, this, this is, you know. My individual page, I'm a board member, this is not the page for the district, the views expressed herein are not the views of the district or the school board. And and any information you provide here should not be deemed to have. Been communicated to the district, and and, you know, that that can be important for for several reasons. One of which was diminished a little bit with the new Title IX regulations, but. You know, if somebody is telling you something in your individual capacity, that's not the same thing as telling Bill. And and that if somebody's trying to report something, you want to make it clear to them that they are not reporting to the district when they're sticking something on your. Individual Facebook page, so that's. One, one thing that I missed with. Not quite social media, but it can relate to. You know, relate to the Facebook comments, for instance. You know, think about some of the comment threads that show up on on the community Facebook page, there may be six hundred of them. And you may, you know, one board member chimes in as number two. And then a hundred later, another board member chimes in as number three, I mean, number, I'm sorry. Second comment is a board member. One-hundredth comment, another board member, second hundred, you know, two, two-hundredth comment is a third board member, and you now have a quorum. So it's not always easy to know that, you know, you're creating the appearance of a a a. Public discussion about jurisdictional matters among a quorum of your board. So we would suggest that that it might be better practice to refrain from ever commenting on on, you know, these community. Webpages, the district might have a page that the district manages. An individual board member might have his or her own page, just be very clear that it's an individual. You know, social media account, and then really, we we would recommend refraining. Whether you're, whether you're talking, thinking about being an individual or a board member, we would recommend refraining from participating in the. You know, comments on other pages, you you could, you know, I suppose if if you saw something that was. Just just completely off-base, you might redirect and say, you know, the the an accurate. Account of what the board did can be found on the school district's website on the board page for the meeting. Minutes for such and such a date, so you're not, you're not engaging in the substantive comment, you're just redirecting where they can find the information.
Or you can just say, dear Mr. Smith, thank you for your comment, if you have any questions, call the superintendent or board chair. And that that's the easiest way to get the information that you want, but.
Yeah, but you might not want to talk to them. Bill, Bill's saying, yeah, no, you don't do that.
This issue, some part of this issue or related issue maybe with some of our boards. Is on email and sort of starting conversations about a topic.
Okay, so that's not quite the social media part. Yeah, yeah, but that does relate to, you know, the first sort of general topic that I discussed, which was. You know, what are the elements of a meeting, and the elements of a meeting, again, are those three, three indicia. An email has been found by at least one Superior Court judge. To meet that second prong, which is the ability to communicate contemporaneously. The question is not whether you communicate contemporaneously, it's whether you are able to. And, you know, think about the the board member, you know, like Clarence Thomas, who never says anything at the meeting. The the fact that he or she didn't say anything at the meeting doesn't mean they weren't there, they were there and they were able to communicate contemporaneously. So the, you know, I received the, so three board members receive the email that's on a substantive topic. And it may have come from the outside world, so it may not even be something that was was initiated by a board member or by by the administration. You received it, it becomes a governmental record, but you're still not having a meeting. What makes it a meeting is when one of the board members then responds in a substantive way. And and and. Or if the board member initiated the communication, so you got two different situations, you got. A member from the public sends a email to the entire board, to the governor, to the, you know. Bill, to, you know, to us, to anybody who has an email address, you get that that substantive complaint from the outside world. That's not a meeting. Or, so that's not a meeting. If a board member responds substantively, other than thank you for your email. I've I've, I forwarded this to the superintendent. The superintendent's attention, or thank you for your email, I suggest you contact the superintendent, that's not a meeting, even if the, you know, other board members saw that part. Responding to the substance of that email is a meeting, the other situation is. The, a board member initiates the email, and it is a substantive communication, I heard what happened in the school. I've finally had it with this person, we've been hearing about this person for years, we need to get rid of that person, you're create, that's a meeting. If I send, if I as a board member send that email to a quorum of the board, I have created a meeting. And and that that type of meeting would be in violation of the right-to-know law. Because, as you know, you need notice, you need a public place to have the meeting, and you need somebody taking the minutes. The other thing that happens with emails is sequential emails and 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 the sequential. Sort of issue occurs with other forms of communication as well, it can, you know, I talked to Jill, Jill talks to John, John talks to Greg. And and at some point, whether it was Jill initially who intended that to happen, so. Jill was doing that to circumvent the statute. That that would be a violation right at the outset, or maybe Jill just meant to, you know, get. You know, talk to John and see what his take on a particular issue, that's not a meeting just yet, because it's just two board members, it's not a quorum of the board. But then John, unbeknownst to Jill, John communicates with Greg, so maybe John's the one who created the meeting. Because John did intend to have a communication with, so you've got to be very, very careful with the sequential communication, whether that's an email. Or whether, you know, I saw Jill in the produce aisle, Jill then went to John's house, and John then called Greg on the phone. That's a sequential chain of communications that's creating that same problem. You know, not every instance of that is going to be a clear violation, but it's a lot easier to stay away from it. Barrett, I don't know if you had some additional thoughts on that.
Thanks, Will, and I I think you captured it pretty well, the one thing. Just to sort of wrap it back up around. The the regular emails in terms of regular communication to either your board chair or the full board or your superintendent or Rhonda. If it's just sort of information or general questioning, you can do, you know, is every, we have to schedule and. An extra meeting, what day is everybody free next week, that's fine, that's, you know, administrative. You know, or Bill sends out, you know, a copy is attached as a copy of a draft agenda, let me know if you're good with it, or if you want to add or change anything. That's communication, that's fine, there isn't really substance about official schools or business or things within the board's jurisdictional power. You know, Bill sends out an email, or the board chair sends out an email attached as a draft of the of the of the report that we'll be discussing at Tuesday's meeting. That's all well and good, but let's say Bill sends out a draft of of a report that the board is going to be getting or presenting or whatnot. Says, please review, we'll talk about it at next week's meeting. Greg then writes back an hour later and says, I made some changes to paragraphs one, three, and five, sends it off. And then Jill says, I agree with Greg's comments, however, I had a couple other things here, then you're getting into the discussion and the deliberation. Over email, which is the discussion of the deliberation can only take part, as Will mentioned, at a duly-called meeting, so. The dissemination and sharing of information is fine, that's how we communicate these days. But once you get into the 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 deliberation and the discussion and the substantive content of the subject matter. That's when you're getting closer to running afoul of the right-to-know law with respect to to email or electronic communication.
One, one thing I would say, just as a, you know, a a best practice with respect to. Communications, the, you know, email communications, it, you know, it's a good habit to, a couple of. Couple of things, number one, if you're going to send something to all of your board members. You you may be better off sending it to, you know, putting the board members' addresses in B C C as opposed to C C. That way, if somebody accidentally hits reply all, it's, you know, so maybe they have, Bill sends out an email. And 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 John has some substantive questions about what Bill said. Nothing, there's nothing inappropriate about John talking to Bill about that, so instead of talking and picking up the phone, he sends an email back to him. It's a substantive communication, if he only sends that to Bill and Rhonda. Because Rhonda's the one who's keeping the records, that's okay. If he hits reply all, and it goes through the rest of the board members, now you're having, you're beginning the substantive conversation. So it's a good idea to use the board members' addresses in your B C C, and Bill, that that Bill and Rhonda, that applies to you as well, you know, use B C C. You can put a notation, you can put a notation in the email saying, you know, this, this went to all board members. Be 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 mindful that this topic should only be discussed at a meeting. You know, so you're 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 alerting people that other people receive, you know, board members received it. But this is only to discuss at the board meeting, if you have any questions, call me.
Another, no, that's okay, well, and I, another point for for the new board members. There's nothing wrong with emailing your board chair, your superintendent after a meeting. You know, you know, I can only imagine what it was like for the new board members. I mean, it's crazy enough when you're coming in and sitting at the table, let alone what it was like trying to do this remotely, I can only, I can only imagine what it was like for you. But, you know, when we do our new school board member orientation in in May, I tell board members, look. You're brand-new, things are flying a hundred miles an hour at the board meetings, unless you've been a regular attendee of school board meetings, you may not be familiar with. The flow and the process and how it works, email your superintendent or your board chair, say, hey, Greg, I I. I I don't understand how this happened last year, I don't understand why this happened last year, can you explain this to me about how we got from A to B last night? That's fine, you you can, you can do that, but again, once you get into the quorum discussion, that sort of stuff, then you're getting closer to it, but. People need to be able to communicate, just, you have to be mindful of 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 how you communicate. The method in which you communicate and the topics upon which you communicate on, but I don't want to scare you thinking that, you know, you can never use email for anything. You just have to be, you have to be more cautious now about how you're using it, who you're copying, and the type of conversation and communications that you're having over it. With that, we're coming up on close to two hours now, I feel like we've taken a lot of your time. Are there any questions on any of these topics or anything else that we didn't even get to, that since you've got Will and I on the phone, we're here to. You're then happy to answer for you.
I do have, Will or Barrett, I do have one more question, and it has to do with what constitutes a public document. Let's say that I create an Excel spreadsheet. That I use in the meeting that I reference, but I do not distribute it to the board or the administration. Is that still considered a private document, or then does that fall under the right-to-know law request if someone wants to see it?
Yeah, Will, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there a provision that says notes and documents made for personal use that are not distributed? To the to the rest of the board are not public records?
Yeah, that's that's in ninety-one A five, it's paragraph eight, and here's, here's the language. Any notes or other materials made for personal use that do not have an official purpose, including but not limited to. Notes and materials made prior to, during, or after a governmental proceeding, and in this context, proceeding means meeting. Or or even if you're sitting at home, so if these are for your own personal use, I'll give you the definition of a. A public record, because you, because there's a. They they overlap, so governmental record. They changed it from public record to governmental, because a governmental record is not necessarily. Public, but means any information created, accepted, or obtained by or on behalf of any public body. Or a quorum or a majority thereof, and and then it goes on. But the, you know, the gist of it is, if the document, remember, I talked about the email, if the email goes to. A quorum of the board or was created and distributed to a quorum of the board, or was on behalf of the board. That is a governmental record, as is almost any piece of paper that the administration. So if Bill creates something and it has to do with his his function as the superintendent, that's a governmental record. If, you know, John sends an email to Jill. And especially if, you know, or, yeah, if John sends an email to Jill. Arguably, that's not going to be a a public record, there's there, there's some instances where it may be, but. There's, there, there's some instances where it may be, but it hasn't been created by a, a majority of the board. It hasn't been sent to a majority of the board and it hasn't been done so on a, on behalf of a majority of the board.
I will interject though there, that if, if, if any time a board member is sending an email through their district email address, through the SAU email address on the district servers, the court is going to find that it's a public record. It's as simple as that because the district owns and maintains that computer system. They're going to say it's within the public record. But I think to your question, Greg, about your Excel spreadsheets, there was a court case, and I don't know if the statute came first or the statute was put in to, to codify the court case. This is probably 30 years or so ago. There was a superintendent who would have a legal pad at the meeting and keep his or her own notes. So he knew what to do, follow up with Bob and send this letter out. Somebody sued under right to know law to see those superintendent's notes. And the court said, no, the superintendent has a right to be able to write his own personal notes to fulfill his job without it being a public record. And Bill, you've got to call at 11, everybody's dropping off. So did that answer your question, Greg? Was that, did that clarify for you? I think you're muted there, Greg. Let me unmute you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It did answer it. Will and Barrett, I really do appreciate this today. As always, it's very informative. If anybody has any questions, you know, you know how to reach, contact Barrett and Will, they're more happy to help out.
Yeah. And I know, you know, because of the nature of the Zooms, like I said, we, we ran a little late and it took a little bit longer. Being respectful of everybody's time, if you want us back at another time for another 45 minutes or an hour on this, that, or the other thing, by all means, let us know and we're happy to do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, folks. Good seeing you.
Before everybody leaves, can I get like an official motion to adjourn from a board member?
Second.
Who did that? Greg?
I did.
Greg and Jill.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Will.
Bye. Thank you.